I call this meeting to order. Please join me to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All right, good evening, everyone. Let's see, let's get a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion by council member Purshman?
I'll second.
And a second by council member Welch. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. All right, is anyone here for community comment tonight, something that they want to talk about that is not on the agenda? We'll move right through that. Up next, we are moving right along to presentations and reports. I understand that not only is Wheel of Fortune on right now, but there's also some kind of sports ball going on. We are going to try to give everybody the 10 minutes that they deserve for each award. So you guys should all be home by like 7:40, quarter to eight. Vikings should only be down by 14 points by then. Okay, up first is the Greg Osterdike Community Service Award. The Greg Osterdike Community Service Award is named after Greg Osterdike, who was the mayor of the city of Carver. In 2019, shortly after Greg passed away, we started thinking about a way that we could honor his memory in a way that was in line with the many contributions of Greg and how he was so involved with the city of Carver and our broader community. The decision was made to rename our Community Service Award after Greg, which I think was the perfect way to honor Greg's memory. Community service was a very important part of who Greg was. He was the mayor of the city of Carver from 2011 to 2014. He was also a Lions Club member. He served on the Saints Foundation at St. Francis Hospital. He led the Steamboat Days Committee and was involved with gardening the Angels Catholic School and so much more. The city of Carver is a better place because of Greg's many, many contributions. The winner of the 2024 Greg Osterdike Community Service Award is a tremendous representation of Greg's outstanding community service. And I should mention, this has always traditionally been the place where I volleys it off to Lori Osterdike, Greg's wife, but she is under the weather tonight and is unable to join us. So I thank her for keeping her germs at home, she's no doubt perhaps watching this at home. But with that, I am really excited to announce that the winner of the 2024 Greg Osterdike Community Service Award is Toni Dewalter. Toni is someone who all of us in this room knows. We all know that she's a firefighter, but Toni is being awarded tonight for her other service to our community, which includes volunteering with the Steamboat Days Volunteer Committee, the Light and Seek Luminary Walk, and so many other community events and organizations. Toni is somebody who you can always count on. Even though she's as busy as the rest of us, you will always find her giving what's left of her free time, volunteering to make our community even better. Toni's constant smile and upbeat can-do attitude with everyone she comes in contact with has made a memorable impression on so many. So with that, congratulations Toni, and thank you so much for everything you've done to make our community a better place. All right, up next on the agenda are our Employee of the Year awards, which is another fun one. Let's see, DeeDee, do you want to come up? I lost you. Forgot to make, you could just come up and sit down if you want. I know, I forgot about it, Toni, I'm sorry. All right, so the Employee of the Year awards are based off of nominations from city of Carver employees. So this is an award from your colleagues, and here's what your colleagues had to say about you. I think DeeDee exemplifies all of our values, especially empathy and professionalism. When we respond to medical calls, I love having DeeDee there. She's great at communicating with patients or family members of patients in a way which calms and reassures them. When interacting with members of the community, either for third grade, safety day, or for public-facing events, she always epitomizes courtesy, politeness, quiet confidence, and always with a smile. She also shows great teamwork, whether through participation or routine training nights or by helping to organize and coordinate our online apparel store for the whole department. When I ran into DeeDee at the fire department open house, everybody had a job and they were in that job for the entire duration, and DeeDee's was cleaning up. And I said like, oh, you got stuck doing garbage duty, and she's like, no, this is great. I get to interact with so many more people this way, and I'm talking to people, and I'm running into neighbors and friends, and like, there's no job DeeDee can't do. And I think, I think it's probably pretty clear that the nominations for this award came in before you beat your entire department in pickleball a few weeks ago. But with that, congratulations DeeDee, you do a terrific job.
DeeDee, did you want to say anything?
You don't get out of a picture, come on. You did try.
I think I just had a call-o.
We made sure that you were covered for tonight because we know how much you love this. So up next is our full-time recipient, full-time staff member who's the recipient of the 2025 Community Service Award, and it is Paul Schultz, who this year is really no stranger to recognition because you may recognize him from previously being, previously being the grand marshal of the Steamboat Days Parade. Additional recognition that he was just as excited about as he is tonight. But Paul, I'm going to read what your peers had to say about you. They said, whether it's something big or small, Paul approaches things with a problem-solving approach. We work well together to create community messages, process changes, and finding ways to support each other. This year was probably as big a year for community or for the Public Services Department as any with the flood that we had this spring. And probably everybody in this room, including the fire department, was involved in that. But Paul was also really, really instrumental on the public services side of things and making sure whether it was rescuing kids who perhaps thought it was a good idea to go down the old county road 40 on bikes in floodwaters with a front-end loader or perhaps against his better judgment, letting me drive that same front-end loader when they were taking down the levees. I felt like always downtown for a two-week period of time. So it is an honor to give you the Employee of the Year Award for 2024. Now's your chance, do you have any comments to make?
My staff, when we were talking about this, said, how come DeeDee's is like huge? Your lines were only like this big. But, you know, it's about the team and it's about everything that all of you do and all of that's behind me. So I appreciate it and I thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks.
Is it five after yet? I didn't think I would get that.
Put that envelope down.
Does anybody else want to film one of them?
I can take your picture.
Yes, you wanted to take a picture of all.
Yes, you do.
People gotta have a good picture, right?
Oh, yes, there you go.
Shortcut.
So one effort. On your part?
Everybody go back.
Let's get a picture.
Yeah, I will. There you go. All right, no council, you step out. No, wait, you're done.
You can't run that fast. One more picture.
Give me a tooth smile, Paul.
All right. Toni, DeeDee, do you guys want to do pictures?
We'd be lucky to have say anything. Did you want to say anything tonight?
All right, we have one more really important recognition tonight. But I just, before I want to do this, I appreciate you guys being here. I also appreciate that this is uncomfortable and you guys are so fantastic and so humble that this is awkward. But I think it's really important that we have the opportunity to get you guys out of your comfort zone and really thank you for all of your hard work and recognize you. So thank you so much and thank you for playing along because this stuff is important. Last tonight, I have the honor of recognizing council member Reed Welch in his very last, last council meeting tonight. So Reed, when I was thinking about what I was going to say tonight, you know, you have been on council for about 15 months. You have a really short term, and it was a quick runway to getting here. You replaced Joy McKnight when she resigned and you were appointed and you were overwhelmingly appointed and awarded the position of council member, for better or for worse, sometimes. But you, at one of your very first meetings, I remember we were doing appointments for commissions and you demonstrated a very eager willingness to compromise, which I think in the political arena where we find ourselves is something that is so sorely missing these days, and I thank you for that. I never once doubted your integrity or your willingness to be here solely to make Carver a better, better place to live, work, and play, and for that, I thank you. So council members, I don't know if you guys have anything else to say to Reed? Are you on the spot?
I can only echo what our mayor said. Reed, thank you for stepping into the position, and that is something I said about you as well. It is so important to the community to have people like you that volunteer extra time. You do more than, just like everybody else up here, but you do more than just attend the meetings. You participate in city events, you attend the other commission meetings. It's a, it's a bit of a labor of love to do that and you stepped into it with unswerving skill and I really appreciate your service to the community.
All right.
I just really enjoyed working with you, Reed, and I know you'll stay involved with all the different areas of the community and sometimes the county. So hope to continue having ways to work together.
Thank you.
And I just want to say it was a pleasure working with you, Reed. I just echo everything that's already been said. So you stepped in, again, a very short term. You got rolling right away and it's, you know, you were on the planning commission and you helped out, you know, the city. And you really worked hard to do your best here for all the residents and I just want you to know that I appreciate all the time that you spent here with us.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Reed.
Thank you.
You definitely don't want a picture with us, right?
Oh, I love.
I think we have to do a picture.
Let's see, and I think we have to take the flag out of the packaging here.
Cake?
Yeah, hold it this way. Yep. That's great. Oh, this is a cute picture.
Let me find my agenda here. All right, that brings us to our public hearings. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing for the 2025 fee schedule?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for the 2025 fee schedule.
Second, council member Purshman, second by council member Mock. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. All right, Ms. Sainz, good evening.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. As you remember, a part of the 2025 budget process, staff reviews the 2024 fees and then proposes changes for the upcoming year, which will be the 2025 fee schedule. These proposed changes, which are identified in red on Exhibit A of the ordinance 09-2024 in the council packet tonight, were reviewed by the city council at their November 18, 2024 work session. So tonight, we are holding the required public hearing to allow for questions and comments from the public. City staff is also here for questions on their respective areas. And included in the packet is, again, their council memos that provide some background information on those proposed fees. So once the public hearing is closed, then we would be looking for two actions, one to adopt the fee schedule and one to adopt the resolution authorizing summary publication of that ordinance. And then, once it is adopted and published in the paper, these fees will go into effect on January 1, 2025.
Mayor and council, just going to add on to kind of Vicki's comments related to the fee schedule. There's a whole bunch of information in your packet. But just understanding some of the feedback we've gotten from residents and on social media, just wanted to add, I would say, another list of ingredients for you to consider when you're thinking about the fee schedule. We haven't often looked at how the city compares to other Carver County cities related to utility rates. So I'm not going to provide any editorial comments other than I do think that there are some distinguishments that you can draw just by looking at the data related to size of city, the year that the last water treatment plant or capacity was added to their plant. But I do think one of the biggest questions that we get from year to year, month to month is, you know, why are Carver's, why is Carver's utility rates or water rates so expensive? And so I think there are multiple ways to answer that question. I would say one of them is it depends on who you're comparing Carver to. I think quite often we get compared to Chaska and Eden Prairie because that's where the majority of our residents who move into Carver end up coming from. But, you know, another piece to this, and I, you know, as I put this together, you know, I looked up, the city of Victoria has about $185,000 worth of debt service in their 2025 water budget. The city of Carver has about $575,000 of water debt in its water budget. And so, again, just one of those little pieces that informs you about how water rates, sanitary and storm sewer rates are put together. And so kind of an appendage to that is looking at our future costs. And we have a water treatment facility planned in the early part of the 2030s, a force main for sanitary sewer at the end of the decade. And then putting that last chart together, just briefly had an email exchange with the city clerk in the city of New Germany, and she kind of lamented that they recently had about a 40% increase to their utility rates to fund some other recent infrastructure costs. And so we know that some of these things are coming, it's just a matter of how you want to plan for them financially and fiscally. There's an approach identified in the long-term plan, that doesn't mean that's the only way, but it's a way that we've modeled and it creates the rate proposals that you see tonight. So happy to answer any questions on this, and then we have the team here to answer any very specific questions as well.
Any questions about utility rates or enterprise fund?
I don't have any questions. I think I appreciate the comparison to other communities. You know, there's some, one really significant point between us, I think, and other neighboring communities, though, is there's the cost of processing water and there's the cost of moving water. And I think with Carver's unique topography, that is hard to compare to other communities because we're moving water up and down big hills with lift stations. And I don't really, I don't think those neighboring communities would have that additional layer of cost. So it's, I appreciate the comparison, but I, you know, I can understand why we've got additional cost here. Related to the plan, and we've talked about this quite a bit, I think we are on the right path to look long-term and budget long-term so we don't leave a future council with a 40% increase. So I'm also comfortable with our current strategy.
Right, I have a question, maybe you won't be able to answer this. But when I'm looking at Waconia and Victoria, you know, Victoria 2005 is the last project that they did and Waconia 2008. And when I think about, so Waconia and the growth out there, how are they doing? How are they doing this where they haven't put any new water plant, treatment plants, or increased their capacity since 2008 or 2005?
I am not 100% certain on this. I know Victoria is planning for another water treatment plant in the same timeframe that we are. I believe Waconia is. I would offer the distinguishment between Carver, just based on what I know, is that when our initial water treatment plant was put in, the thought of 212 and Carver at 7,000 people was not a reality. And so this, you know, the initial construction of, I think it was built around 2003, if I'm remembering right. And so if you, if we had, if we would have known in 2003 what we know today, we probably would have bought a larger site, built a bigger facility, and some things would have been different. Now you still would have the topography pieces. But as far as like the details of Waconia and Victoria, beyond knowing that Dana Hardy shared that they're planning for a facility in, you know, like 2031. I, I believe I read online Waconia was doing some analysis or assessment of future needs, but I don't know their capacity. You know, just put this together frankly this morning after having some windshield time this weekend, thinking about ways that we could explain this in a, in a new way, so.
Okay, thanks. Other questions?
I guess I would just echo the comments, kind of. All these numbers are backed up by plans and analysis, right? We have a long-term financial plan, we have individual 10-year plans for each of the major departments. So all these numbers that we've come up for the fee schedule have, have backing behind it. They're not, you know, kind of pulled out of the air. We have a relatively rigorous process as best as we can to predict the future. So that's it.
Anything familiar? No. I just want to go on record in saying that I don't like this. I don't like the idea of raising water prices. I don't know that any of us do, if asked, right?
I think it's zero of us do.
However, I feel like this is financially prudent. Like Reed said, we've got the plans that demonstrate the need for this. Can you go to that next slide that talks about all the investments?
Yeah.
As it was famously said during the candidate forum, it costs a lot of money to put shovels in the ground and have somebody dig a hole. These are big numbers that we're looking at for capital investments in our water system to keep up with Carver's growth. I will once again refer to a community that is neighboring where I grew up in southeastern Wisconsin, and this article that I printed out from the News Graphic that talks about their need to replace their water recycling center, which is sewage treatment, but it's still water system, so you get the idea. They are looking at a project that is going to cost tens of millions of dollars and these residents are looking at a bill that's going to, a water bill that's going to go from $55 a month to $165 a month. What we are doing by doing these incremental increases is kind of avoiding that sticker shock in 10 years when we need a new water treatment plant or when we need a new force main or when we need a new Southwest trunk utility extension, or, or, or. There is so much that we need for this water system. So do I love the increases? Absolutely not. Are they needed and do I think that this is a really financially responsible way of making sure that we have money for these in five, 10 years and when they come due? Yes, yes, I do. Okay, so moving on from that, we'll be at the point, is that the presentation or are we going to?
I don't think we have any public comments.
Okay, let's see, well, let's see about that. Do we have any public comments? Kayla? You'd have to come up, if you want to be, okay, fantastic. All right, there are no public comments, so let's close the public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Motion by council member Welch.
I'll second.
Second by council member Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. All right, are there any additional questions from the council? Now, can I get a motion?
I move to adopt ordinance 09-2024, amending certain fees charged by the city.
Got a motion by council member Welch.
I'll second.
And I'm going to give that to Eric, second by council member Purshman. You can't get any of them tonight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. There's another motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 153-24, authorizing summary publication of ordinance 09-2024.
Got a motion by council member Mock.
I'll second.
A second by council member Sarah. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. All right, thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by council member Purshman.
I'll second.
Second by council member Welch, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes. All right, business items, 8.1. All right, business items, 8.1, cannabis retail dispensary zoning. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This has been a little bit of a whirlwind of a process. Bringing the cannabis zoning into the city of Carver zoning code has happened really quickly just based on what's happening at the state, how the Office of Cannabis Management is getting off the ground, and as information has been dispersed to the city. So the city council had a listening session at your October 21st meeting. So we heard from a couple of business owners, the school. We heard from some residents and business owners outside of that meeting as well. We talked about it at the Carver Business Alliance, got some really good feedback from downtown business owners thinking about cannabis, where it can be located in the community, what impact it might have to them. After that, the city council reviewed the information at your November 18th work session and then pitched it over to the Planning Commission for their first and second review. So the Planning Commission reviewed on November 21st. They affirmed the information that you provided, so setting some buffers for some certain users that I'll talk about. And then just last Thursday, four days ago, the Planning Commission held their public hearing and again moved through this ordinance. So the ordinance that's before you tonight is related to cannabis and cannabis management throughout the city of Carver. This is something we've been tasked to do by the state. So cannabis users need to be allowed somewhere in the city, but we have some discretion about where they can be located and then optional buffers that can be included for the community. So you'll notice in the ordinance, the first thing that is mentioned is a slew of definitions that don't exist in our city code today. So the first big change is adding these to the definition section of our zoning code. The ordinance then permits cannabis businesses in a few districts. So the first is the central business district, which permits cannabis users, cannabis dispensaries downtown without buffers. The freeway commercial district has a few buffers, so from daycares, the city council and planning commission both agreed that from a property line, a cannabis dispensary should not be within 500 feet. So going from all property lines, all sides of the property, and then 1,000 feet from a school. So getting that feedback from a couple of the daycares and the school in town were really helpful to start framing what that meant for us. So the city council and planning commission both agreed on those buffers. Something that's changed since the time the city council reviewed it, that the planning commission really focused on was setting hours of operation. So they felt really strongly that cannabis businesses should not be allowed to be open 24/7. So the ordinance that's before you tonight limits hours from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. daily. So that allows for cannabis dispensaries in the central business district and freeway commercial district with buffers in the freeway commercial district. And then it also includes some information for our industrial district for some of those more industrial users, more industrial users. So things like manufacturing of cannabis, cannabis cultivation, delivery, et cetera, is limited just to the industrial district. So if someone is growing and creating a product, that happens in the industrial district, can be sold in central business district and freeway commercial, if not within those buffers that are included in the ordinance. So Dave, the city attorney, has been really instrumental in helping put this together, making sure we cross all the Ts and dot the Is. So I'll open it up for discussion for both me and Dave at this point, if the council has any feedback.
Questions, comments? I do, go ahead. So under permitted use, it's on page two, so where the planning commission, letter F, had put in the retail hours. I did stop over on my way in to check their hours next door just to see what they were. It was, they're doing only until 7:00 p.m. right now. My issue with saying 9:00 p.m. is a little bit twofold. So you can buy alcohol until 1:00 a.m., 2:00 a.m. if you have a 2:00 a.m. liquor license. I'm not promoting that we should have businesses open until 10, I'm sorry, until 2:00 a.m. I do think though, because this is a business, it needs to be open and to give them some leeway of their own business hours to have them from 10 until 10. That gives them 12 hours, half of a full day, to be able to be open if they choose to during that time. I wasn't at the planning commission meeting, so I'm going to actually put this to Dave. Is there any statute, Dave, or anything that comes from the state that has to do with the 9:00 p.m. time that's written here?
Mayor and council, yes, the, this is the strictest that a city can be. And from the standpoint of hours, one thing I'd add, this is just for cannabis retailers or, you know, the cannabis dispensaries. It does not prohibit the bars, restaurants, liquor stores that sell low potency hemp edibles, THC seltzers that are pretty widely available already under a law that changed a few years ago. Doesn't prohibit those businesses from selling those products during hours that they can otherwise sell alcohol, if that makes sense. But to answer your question, this is the maximum limitation that a city can impose on an actual dispensary. State law does technically allow these businesses to operate, I think, until 2:00 a.m. if you didn't have these restrictions in place. But a lot of cities are exercising the right under the statute to limit them to be a little bit stricter than that.
Okay, so when we talk about the, this in your saying lower potency hemp edibles, that is the same as what a bar could sell until 2 o'clock in the morning?
Correct.
Or 1 o'clock, depending on their license. So, okay, so technically part of this could be sold across the street if somebody really wanted it. And we've just closed down a business and said, but we'll give the business to somebody else because they sell alcohol. So for me, I think, even, I want to be generous to these businesses within reason, of course, that I think saying that you have a 12-hour window to be open from 10 until 10:00 p.m. makes more sense to me than saying you can't be open, but the one across the street can sell the, some of the exact same items. So that's mine. I, I think I would rather see it 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I don't hate that idea, but would there be any possibility that they just couldn't sell real weed? Outside of those hours, but 3-2 weed, which again is the term used. Be sold at the same store, just like if you go to a liquor store, a grocery store in Wisconsin that's open longer, but you can buy, you can't buy beer there during certain hours, but you can still get milk and butter.
I guess you could do that. I mean, my, I, the only concern, I guess I would have is, I mean, it's going to be tempting for a business if they stay open past 9:00 p.m., only selling something to.
Sure.
Say like, eh, well.
Yeah, no, I get it. I'm just curious how stringent, yeah, the restrictions are. I don't have any issue with opening it another hour later.
Yeah, yeah, another hour is fine with me.
Any other questions, council?
No, I, I don't think we should. I think it's an undue burden to have a store have to figure out what has to stop an hour in advance of another product. So I don't think that, that makes sense. The extra hour though, I mean, by that logic, they would stay, could stay open till 2. I didn't see the debate. Was 9 o'clock an arbitrary number or how did we arrive at 9?
9 o'clock is the, like I said, the strictest that cities can be under the statute. So that.
9 o'clock is the, is the limit under the statute? So we're going to be beyond the statute?
It's restrictive.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, so we can't require them to stop selling any earlier than that.
And the planning commission didn't feel strongly about 9 specifically. They just were not in favor of it being open until 2.
If there was no stated desire, I mean, if there wasn't a concern around that, then I'm not concerned either. I think 9 o'clock is fine.
And again, this is always something we can adjust, we can move forever, for whatever reason. We don't want to say to open that extra hour. Anybody else have comments?
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead.
I have some questions. Erin, on the definitions, the daycare, so what does that mean for our city? So can you pull that up again? I think it was on page three of eight in the packet where it mentions, you know, licensed. So for us, regardless of whether it's the freeway commercial district or downtown, is that first steps? O2B kids, next step, sorry. Is that the three daycares?
So next steps, the property Carver Commons is freeway commercial. And then Carver Square where O2B Kids is located is freeway commercial. So those two would have buffers of 500 feet since they're in the freeway commercial district. River Wild Learning Center, which is downtown in the central business district, would not have a buffer.
And home daycares, that's not part of this definition? When I read it, I wasn't sure, that's why I'm asking.
No, so home daycares would not be a permitted use in the freeway commercial or central business district. They're in the residential zoning districts.
Okay, so as far as if we didn't have a zoning portion, have we taken the zoning part out? What, what does this mean? What is this definition of daycare for the city of Carver? Is it also home daycares?
No.
Yeah, yes, it is. It is, but I think what Erin is suggesting is that the vast majority of in-home daycares are in residential districts. And so you're not going to be able to operate. There are very few commercial properties within 500 feet of an in zoning district. There could, I guess theoretically, be an in-home daycare that is adjacent to the freeway commercial district that would preclude a cannabis retail business from locating within 500 feet of that in-home daycare. But I don't know if there are any that would pose issues for the city of Carver. It just depends on the locations. But the, the definition of daycare, to answer your question, is broadly enough written to include both the daycare centers that have state licenses and in-home daycares that have, they have state licenses too.
So if, if, I'm just, if Debbie's daycare, right? She has it and she's in her house on 1, 2, 3, 4 street. And the freeway commercial is something that's within 500, that could technically keep the cannabis business out of there because she has it in her home?
If the parcel that a business would want to locate was within 500.
Okay, okay, so it could affect that.
I have another question. We had looked at maps in one of the previous meetings. Do you have any of those in the packets?
Uh, no, I can pull them up though.
That was helpful to see. Because I have concerns with, we had one map, and actually it was in one of our newsletters too, where it's, and it, and the purpose of it was the, you know, United Properties final plat. But when you draw a circle from the property line of, of the business cannabis in either 500 feet or 1,000 feet, you're really kind of limiting things that could go in those future commercial areas. On mine, it's orange boxes. But this is what I was looking at when we. The final plat.
Yeah, keep, keep in mind, it's, it works to keep the cannabis business out. It doesn't work to keep a daycare or a school out. So a school or daycare could always locate closer to an existing cannabis dispensary if they wanted to. It's just that a cannabis dispensary cannot locate within X amount of feet of a school or a daycare if, if it wanted to. It's not like.
It doesn't kick the cannabis business out because they're almost the grandfathered in.
They would be grandfathered in, exactly. Yep.
And although it wouldn't be allowed at Carver Square or Carver Commons, there are other commercial areas in our community where if and when, and we are likely going to only be awarded, awarded, allowed one cannabis license.
Right, based on the population.
Based on the population. But in 12 years, when we're double our size and we have two, there are other areas besides those two areas where, where another weed store can go.
Can it go up by Fleet Farm right now? If they've built in a business right there?
So Fleet Farm is also freeway commercial. It would depend on the property that would be annexed and then how we would zone it. So potentially Fleet Farm specifically is freeway commercial though.
And across the street, is that considered freeway commercial?
Across the street, like.
Lakeview, thank you.
Lakeview's industrial.
And so it's not allowed in the industrial area?
Like the cultivation and manufacturing would be, but not the sale.
Yeah, I guess I, I kind of echo Lori's concerns. I, I do like the idea of a buffer, but I think 1,000 feet is, 1,000 feet and 500 is too much, right? I mean, if we look at the map, I don't know how a kid at the elementary school would be worried about a cannabis weed store on the other side of the Mocha Monkey. Right? So, you know, I, I think, I think having a buffer is a good idea. I guess I'd like to see maybe a cut in half, so like a 500-foot buffer from the school and like a 250-foot buffer from a daycare. So again, that would keep, you know, the, and this is from the property line, right? So you think, you know, at least, you know, three or four parcels, right? I mean, if a parcel is 50 feet wide, right, or 100 feet wide, right? That's two or three parcels between a buffer, right? So then you're avoiding the, having the daycare across the street from the cannabis retailer versus having it, you know, on the other end of the building or on the other end of the property, right? I mean, again, if we look at the map there, thinking if there was a, you know, I guess way at the top there, right? We had a retailer up in that corner, right? You know, 500 feet away from the school and 250 feet away from daycare. I, I don't think I'd be worried about, you know, children wandering over, having to interact with. But that's just my opinion.
So Reed and Lori, I'm a little disappointed in hearing your comments tonight because this feels like a, really a rough change in direction. We had our listening session, the first meeting in November, where we heard from the principal of Carver Elementary, who said, I want it as far away as possible. Sam Blank used to be a middle school principal, and he is seeing this as an issue in the middle schools. And he's, exact words were something along the lines of, it's not an issue at the elementary schools and I hope to never see it there, but I need your help for that. I also reached out to the daycare center staff, management owners from O2B Kids and Next Steps. And they said, O2B Kids wanted it as far away as possible. What did she throw out there, like 1,000? Really, really far? And she made it really, really clear. And then the Kerbers, let's see, Matt Kerber sits on the Carver County Planning Commission, and his words were, it would be a little hypocritical if we didn't do it exactly the same way as we're doing it for the Carver County records. So 1,000 feet from schools and 500 feet from daycare was the direction that we gave the planning commission. That was the direction they ran on. Now you guys are moving the goalposts. So I want to continue to see it at 1,000 feet.
I'm looking again at my notes.
1,000 feet for schools and 500 feet for daycare in the freeway commercial district.
So I, I want to reply to that, and then I still have another question that I.
Go ahead.
Wanted to discuss. I'm looking at my notes from that Monday, November 4th meeting, and I was the one that did not support any buffer. So I can, maybe I didn't communicate it well, but I still have that. Because to me, that, we didn't reach out to United Properties and, that I know of, or, you know, like we did to daycares, or, you know, represented from the city did. So what are they thinking and would like to know? And for me, yes. If it was, well, my other thing was, I think last Wednesday, the office of, I have to even look to, the Office of Cannabis Management, Wednesday had, and I'm, an update. I looked at League of Minnesota Cities, and they hadn't made any updates to their guidelines. But then there was some press releases last Thursday, which also happened to be the same day, you know, city, uh, the planning commission had their meeting. But for me, according to where things are at with state regulators and their progress, so at this time, no one's going to be coming to the council and asking for zoning approval. They've actually, the Office of Cannabis Management has opted to abandon the license free approval lottery, so.
Respectfully, Lori, that's not what we're discussing tonight. The zoning has to be completed by the end of the year. We have to make those decisions tonight.
I have not seen that anywhere, that it has to be completed. That's very strong words. I think that's our words, but I don't see a reason to maybe, I would prefer to table this because I do not support the way it is.
I need some help. Can you guys clarify that this is something we have to do before the end of the year?
Sure, Mayor and Council. So we adopted, the council adopted a moratorium last summer, summer of 2023. And under the Cannabis Act, the new state law, the longest that those moratorium, moratoria can last is through the end of 2024. Last week, the Office of Cannabis Management did indicate that they're delaying their preapproval process, and that was based on a lawsuit from a number of applicants who felt that, to my understanding, they were incorrectly disqualified from the process, which just causes things to get pushed back a couple of months. But it is very important to have zoning regulations in place before the moratorium expires because otherwise businesses could theoretically start to seek zoning approvals and do other things, including get preapprovals and do certain activities that you can do before you actually get your full-blown license to operate. They can start doing those things as soon as OCM pushes the go button, which none of us really know when that will be. It's sort of a moving target, but I am strongly encouraging every city to have these zoning regulations in place before the end of the year, which is why, you know, we've teed this up for tonight's meeting. And what I would also say is that there is going to be a separate ordinance related to registration, depending on if we want the county to handle that or if the city wants to do that. That's going to be coming. That's going to be coming closely behind, probably sometime in early, early, late January. I think Brett and I talked and the county plans to send a representative to the second meeting in January just to talk about what they intend to do if we wanted to defer that registration to them. Totally different conversation, but I think it's related to this. But I just say that because I do think time is of the essence. I don't want businesses to establish through loopholes or through other mechanisms that would then provide them an argument that we can't zone them effectively in the way we want to do it. So the sooner this is in place, the better because, like I said, that moratorium, as soon as the end of the year comes, is gone. So, you know, it doesn't mean you can't tweak your zoning regulations. That's always a possibility. But I'd prefer to have something in place that, you know, the council or a majority of the council can, can live with for now. And if you ever want to rethink those regulations or consider changing them, you can always go back to the drawing board, make tweaks. And again, we're probably talking about one dispensary, at least for quite some time until the city exceeds 12,500 people, which won't be for quite a handful of years, so.
All right, yeah, I guess.
Can I respond to Lori?
Uh, sure.
Okay, so Lori, I wanted, I do remember that you, that you were for no buffers or the least amount that we could have.
I normally am for less regulations as well. On this topic at this time, I think the OCM, the Office of Cannabis Management, has really failed at what they were supposed to bring out to us. When this first came along that they had legalized it, at that point, and, and most of the councils said, let's lobby it back, throw it back to the state. Let them tell us what they, they're the ones who, who made this legal. Let them help us, let them tell us what this is supposed to look like. And we were getting so little guidance, at least that is my personal view, is that we're getting very little guidance from them. They are, they can't keep it staffed, for one. They can't figure out what they're doing, their people are suing, there's lawsuits and they're dropping things. And I've been watching that too about the, the ones who were, the lottery ones who are all upset now too. So for me, I normally would probably fall more towards the way you were thinking, but because the OCM itself from the state, I don't think has fulfilled the regulations in the way that they have told us they were going to, that for right now, I'm more comfortable with this so that we have something in place. To me, it can be, it can always be looked at, it can always be adjusted as the state finally gets their ducks in a row. If they get their ducks in a row when it comes to this. And then the county, again, we do have to have something because the moratorium is going to expire. So I, I do get what you're saying and, and in the beginning, I was right along the board with, let the state figure it out, let's not have as many regulations on this, but they're just not coming around. And so for me, at this point, I just can't say, hey, let's just do whatever, because I, I don't know what that means in the end when it comes to the rest of the regulations.
All right, Lori, you should do another topic? No, I don't think so. Eric?
So I'm in favor of the regulations as we're, as they are stated here tonight. I think we asked for a community comment, we received that. This was tailored with those comments and concerns in mind. And I think Councilmember Mock really just summarized well that we can't leave an ambiguous loophole. We have to take the action that we can now and we can always change that.
Reed?
Yeah, I guess my, again, my concern was just, you know, obviously we need to get the zoning regulations in before the end of the year to match our more term. My concern, I remember when I was talking in the work session again, was, you know, having that large buffer basically only allows it practically in the downtown area currently, right? So that, that was my big concern, where we were kind of picking where it went versus if we had a slightly smaller buffer, we'd give a little more freedom to potentially have it in, in the kind of United Properties corner there versus, you know, currently the only practical place is, is in the central business district. And I just thought that was a little too restrictive for my preference.
I hear you. That was kind of the way that we talked about it when we made this decision and being intentionally restrictive to the freeway commercial district. In our future land use map, there are areas that have yet to be developed that very likely might be when we're 12,501. That will be available and will be commercial centers, hubs, that will be possible, that won't be in the freeway commercial district. That might not have a daycare center in it first, like we're seeing in Carver Commons and Carver Square. All right, with that, I will make a motion to adopt ordinance 10-2024, amending Chapter 50 of the City Code pertaining to cannabis and hemp businesses.
I'll second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just to clarify, I assume that's with the 10 p.m. change?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, I will amend my motion to include the 10, open 10 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Thank you.
And I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Johnson, second by Councilmember Pershman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Nay. Or I oppose.
All right, can we get a vote please?
Sure.
Nope, I didn't ask you.
Councilmember Welch?
Nay.
Councilmember Mock?
Aye.
Mayor Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Sayer?
Nay.
Councilmember Pershman?
Aye.
Motion passes, 3-2.
Sorry to interrupt again. If I could just clarify too, so the, since the ordinance has passed, the summary resolution, even for those opposing the ordinance, from my perspective, still makes sense to allow the shorter version to be published. I always like to point that out because it requires four votes. So just for those that maybe aren't in favor of the ordinance, voting for the summary resolution is not indicative of your desire for the ordinance to pass, it's already passed. I would like to clarify.
Clarify, we're not voting on the issue, we're voting on publishing what we just decided as a team.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 156-24, Resolution authorizing summary publication of ordinance 10-2024.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Mock, second by Councilmember Welsh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. All right, up next, 8.2, the 2025 levy and budget. A shitty, not used to looking.
I know, it is kind of new. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're here to consider adopting the final 2025 property tax and property tax levy and budget. So you've seen my face a lot in the last six months talking about the 2025 budget and levy. The last meeting that we had, I presented the truth in taxation. There were no public comments at that time, either here or virtual. But what we are looking at is some major tax levy drivers is $155,000 in capital improvements, about $149,000 in implementing a capital, or a pay-for-performance plan. And $25,000 increase in fire emergency wages and training. And then about $40,000 for two new public service employees. The other increases come with operating costs and inflation. So when we're looking at our levy history, we're looking at an 11.84% increase from last year. Total levy adoption of $4,90625. One new thing that I just want to point out when you're looking at the levy adoption for this year is we have added that equipment levy in addition to the street maintenance levy, the debt levy, and then the general levy. So one motion that we're looking for tonight is a motion to approve the property tax levy. And then secondary, looking at the 2025 budget. So I have laid out in the council memo, a budget for the general fund and the enterprise funds. So the 2025 budget for the general fund is $3,995,482, both in the revenue and the expenses, that's a balanced budget. And then you'll see over on the enterprise funds, those ones aren't, they don't have to balance, but I do have detailed budgets and levies attached. If you have any questions, I know we have gone over this quite a few times, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have tonight.
Any questions?
I'll just jump in for a comment. As, you know, this is my, most of my first full year on the council, so I got the entire budget process from start to finish. When I joined last October, we were pretty much wrapped up and it is really hard to get, get, get a budget that, you know, obviously no one likes any, any increases, but, but like I said with utilities, right? All of these numbers, we have a plan behind them, we have a project. All those street maintenance, equipment levy, we have a plan. You can go out, look and find out when your street is going to be upgraded or sealed or paved based on our plan, our 10-year payment management plan. So, so yeah, it was a, it's really, like I said, it was really hard to try and find any savings, right? You have to quickly get down to things that, that people find essential. So I, I appreciate all the staff's hard work. I appreciate all the council's previous hard work in getting us to where we are. I, I think this is a very sound budget. Obviously, we would prefer to have as small as increase as possible, but like I said, all these numbers, we have our best guess at predicting the future and trying to have a rational plan of where we, where we get all these numbers from.
Thank you, Reed.
Yeah.
I don't have anything. Lori?
No, thank you for doing all the work for your team and answering our questions throughout the process.
Eric?
I don't have any questions. Again, thank you for all of the work. It is difficult to find savings, but you did. Really, you found a way to reduce our healthcare costs by moving to a new provider. And all of those little moves and looking around the corner that you made really made a difference in having a lower increase than I think we started with. I'm also, as I look at the spend and everything we do to protect the future, protect our, our residents from having something they're not expecting five years from now, I think all of this provides a good value in the spend for the residents of Carver. So I'm, again, thank you for the work and I, I think this represents all the work of the city staff and council well.
Thank you. Thank you for all your hard work on this. You know, if you, somebody's watching at home tonight and taking a look at this, this is going to be the agenda item that we go through the quickest. However, if you take a look at it kind of comprehensively and how much time we put into voting this budget together, this is probably the sixth, seventh, or eighth time that we have talked about it, be it at a council meeting or at a work session. And we have taken every single look at it. We've talked about enterprise funds, we've talked about the budget, we've talked about the budget review, you know, budget version two, budget version three. So I don't want it to come off as, wow, they approved the budget in a room full of just, you know, one person from the public there without giving it any thought and our taxes are going to go up. You know, this is an $85 increase on our median-priced home, which is, I think, fairly reasonable. I understand that there's more going and I know that we've got economic pressures, but we do have some really great stuff in here. Earlier tonight, we recognized the city staff and that is, talked about how important that is, is the lifeblood of our community. That's how stuff gets done around here. So I am especially proud of the pay-for-performance that we are going to be seeing in the 2025 budget. And really appreciate the support of council to support that initiative. Hopefully, I guess, depending on this vote. But with that, I, I think final point is, I think every time we talk about the budget, we try to go deep in the weeds as a council and talk about franchise fees and make it really clear that the city of Carver does not do franchise fees. Our neighbors to the east make as much revenue in franchise fees as is our budget for our general fund budget. They are a community that is five times bigger than us. It is not at all an apples-to-apples comparison. However, that is a solid revenue stream that is making revenue for three out of the four communities in eastern Carver County. So I think this is more of a pure, if you will, taxation model, if that makes sense, versus having hidden fees in there, because as we learned in early 2020 when we were discussing this and we heard back from residents, a tax by any other name is still a tax, so. With that, I will make a motion to adopt Resolution 154-24, certifying the 2025 property tax levy in the amount of $4,90625.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Mayor Johnson and a second by Councilmember Welsh. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
I'll make a motion to.
Motion passes, sorry, go ahead.
Make a motion to adopt Resolution 155-24, approving the 2025 budget.
Got a motion by Councilmember Sayer?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Pershman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, item 8.3, the collective bargaining agreement for AFSMI. Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So happy to bring a new collective bargaining agreement. The city has a bargaining relationship with the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, primarily non-supervisory staff in the city. You can see in the table and the memo, the positions that are covered. Really, the, we had one year left in our contract with AFSMI in 2025. However, the, there was an impetus to take a look at that agreement based on the city's discussions with the pay-for-performance model. So with that, developed a new three-year agreement. So this would run through 2027, implementation of the milestone program. There is a new Minnesota paid leave law. Now, it's, might be amended during this upcoming legislative session, but establishes a premium, statewide premium for a statewide family and medical leave program. And so there's language to cover that should that become law in January of 2026. We'd need to budget for that and talking to some peers around the county and other cities, I haven't found a city that is going to be passing that along to their employees. So I think that would be the outlier. But again, that might be something that we want to talk to our legislators about or within the confines of our legislative priorities. I think this is an editorial comment, but I think in many respects, public employers have this covered. And so personally, I don't think there is a role for city and county units of government to participate in a paid leave program when we provide paid leave. But again, that's my own soapbox. So back to the issue at hand. So we have a three-year agreement. The agreement was approved by the AFSMI membership and the document was prepared by the city attorney. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
Just clarification. So this was, again, we implemented a pay performance plan for our non-union staff. And then the council decided that we would offer this for an entire city staff, right? And this is just the continuation and the implementation of that.
Yeah, the, the membership of AFSMI, the, their wages are based on a collective bargaining agreement. So they have to, in essence, agree to whatever pay is offered by the city. And so this is a representation of that contractual agreement.
But we're, we're offering an increase, right? Like, it's like you said, it was typically a two-year contract and we are, we're starting a new contract with a, with an increase, right? For the, the new performance plan, or am I?
Yeah, this, the agreement includes the implementation.
Yes, yes, okay, yes, okay, that's it, thank you.
I don't have anything. Lori? No comments or questions?
No questions.
I have no comments or questions. I believe in supporting the idea of not passing along the paid leave to our employees. Just, I know you've talked in your circles, some folks that I've talked to at the league as well, I have not heard of a city that is passing this along to employees, which I don't think it should be their burden.
I'll make a motion to approve a collective bargaining agreement with American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Minnesota Council 65, FL-CIO Local 2789-3.
A motion by Councilmember Mock.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Eric.
I'll second.
Give it to Councilmember Pershman. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes. All right, communications.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. The council may remember, we were in the process of soliciting applications for a public services director. Based on the, the number of applicants, we decided to suspend that application process. And so right now, we're in a pattern of, I would say, a And so, um, right now, we're in a pattern of, I would say, assessment. So, uh, working with the entire public services team, Paul Schultz and Eric Madigan are leading it, and then some folks here at City Hall. Um, we're just kind of doing, I would call, almost like a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats, and looking at what the needs of the department are. So rather than saying we need this position, uh, we're working to identify what the department needs as a whole and then kind of categorizing them and seeing what position we need based on those needs. And maybe there's, uh, maybe there's a new position, maybe it's, um, reframed, uh, re-categorized, or maybe it's a couple of things. It could be maybe some administrative support. Maybe it's another technician. Uh, but right now, we're just focusing on the, realize I say ingredients a lot, but focusing on the ingredients of what is needed. And I'm really excited about it because we're, every member of the public services team and our administrative staff are going to be contributing to what that is. Uh, there have been a lot of changes, uh, from top to bottom in that department. And so I think it's a, we have a good opportunity now to kind of take an assessment. Um, and then if we land in the same spot, then we will, uh, go up for applicants again in the spring, summer. Uh, but now this didn't seem to be the right time. Uh, kind of connected with that, in some ways, unfortunately, we, uh, um, lost our utility superintendent, Eric Mintz. Uh, so you might, may have noticed, uh, we are seeking applications. We're taking applications through, uh, the end of the month. Uh, we have kind of two, uh, kind of what I call them trainees on our utilities end of the public services department. So for this, uh, interim period, uh, we're contracted with Bolton and Mink, who's giving us a licensed operator. So, um, his name is Victor. He will be kind of meeting with the team and we have a, kind of a plan in place to support our trainees, but also have the senior staff available, uh, here on a day-to-day basis so that we can, uh, meet the needs of our residents and operation of our water system. And then, uh, finally, and I, the mayor might touch on this, but, uh, been connecting with, uh, Carver County Environmental. Uh, they are starting an organics collection program for like food waste, et cetera. They've been putting, uh, dumpsters throughout the county for that residential collection. And so, uh, they have an interest in presenting to the council in January. Uh, just a little bit about their program and I've been working with Paul on perhaps finding a location for a, a dumpster in the community. So he's, uh, his name is Marcus Zibden. Um, he's going to be, uh, sending me some literature that I'll forward on to the council and, uh, making some arrangements for him to present the program to the council. That's all that I have.
Just as some background on that, I had a resident come to me and say, hey, I'm taking my food waste. I think the environmental center does it. And he had seen a post from, I think, Carver County saying that they were putting some of these dumpsters into communities. Cologne is getting one. Um, and I just thought it would make sense to look into and see what we could do. And food waste is a big problem. The idea is not to have food waste in the first place, but having it a place where you can put it.
Is that like cooking oil or what is that?
No, think, um, uh, the salad that you have the best intentions of making and eating, but then the lettuce goes to rot in your fridge. Maybe that only happens to me.
No, I buy a lot of spring mist. It never gets eaten.
Yeah, yeah, you know, so just, um,
That's actually way too optimistic.
That are past their prime. You could probably take the moldy bread there. I guess I'm not an expert in that area, but all of the food that goes bad, instead of throwing it away and putting it in a landfill, it would get
That's true.
So when it's communal, where are they setting these up? So you just drive up to it and toss your stuff in?
Yeah, it's kind of like a, a small dumpster that is in a public space. And I think we're still trying to work on what that looks like and where that is.
Okay. So I mean, it could be anywhere from, I mean, Fleet Farm could have one if they wanted it. Or if a city hall had a big parking lot, which we don't, you could put it there.
I think it has to be, I think we're thinking more city property versus private industry or commercial. So the parking lot of a park or
Just for what?
Yes, but it's a better
I know.
I Really looking forward to Marcus's presentation. I don't know anything about this, but I think there may be some, it looks like a little bit of a different dumpster to me. So I don't know if there's some safeguards in there to prevent, um, from smells and other things.
Vermin.
So, um, I am sure that he is much better versed on this topic than I am and that it's more better thought through than what I have tried to figure out in my mind. But it just seemed like something that, this happens to be a really good time for the county where they're trying to work in where they're putting these and, uh,
I don't think it's a bad idea at all.
Yeah. I don't know. I just
Picture your refrigerator full of wilted lettuce.
And banana peels or something. I don't know.
The bananas are in the freezer because I'm allegedly going to make banana bread out of them. But, okay, let's do updates. Eric, you've not gone first all night long.
Oh, alright. So I attended the Southwest Transit meeting, uh, last week. Uh, would they, we officially, uh, extended our Southwest Prime for twenty twenty-five, Carver and Victoria with no cost increase to the city. Uh, there's been some discussion of what that looks like now in twenty twenty-six. And I imagine, uh, there'll be some discussion with Brent and city staff. And, uh, we'll have to socialize that sometime in twenty twenty-five. Um, and then, uh, there was some, uh, the, there's a fixed route to the airport that's going to be expanded and that will leave from Eden Prairie. So you'll be able to park your car and take a ride to the airport for, uh, probably a lot less than parking your car close to the airport and taking the shuttle. So a good option with a regular departure schedule.
Cool.
That's, that's it for me.
Lauren?
Uh, I don't have any updates. Kristi? Uh, we did not have an HPC meeting this month. Uh, we did have a fire board meeting though and, um, or since the last time we met. So I believe that was in between these two meetings. Um, the December's kind of flying, mixing the other here. Um, Brenton and Lynn were both at that meeting. Uh, we discussed budgets and the townships were in, in favor of what we were presenting to them. Um, of course, I left my paperwork sitting on the countertop, so, um, I can't give you any more specifics than that, but, um, it was a very good meeting. Again, the townships, we have San Francisco and Dahlgrin that we, um, do fire coverage with. San Francisco also does have part of theirs go to Belle Plaine. But, um, what we presented to them and our discussions through it, they were in favor of what we were proposing, so.
Reid?
I, I have a few things.
Go ahead.
Alright, uh, uh, so first, um, Brent, have we had any feedback on our, uh, federal funding for the levy? I know we were optimistic at the budget, but I know the federal government's sometimes not as
Yeah, nothing, nothing recently.
Okay, cool. Um, and then, uh, we had the city planning commission meeting, obviously, last Thursday. They went over the, uh, uh, zoning ordinance for the cannabis that was approved tonight. Um, and then I had a county park board meeting on Wednesday as well. Um, there, we went over the five-year capital plan for the county. So, um, you know, uh, some repairs for different, uh, features at the, um, Minnewashter Regional Park and Baylor Regional Park. And then we also approved a, uh, consulting service to develop a master plan for Baylor Regional Park. So Baylor Park hasn't had any detailed planning since the seventies when it was first built. So it's going to be a full year-long effort. Uh, the county's going to budget, hopefully millions of dollars for a upgrade path for the next five to ten years for Baylor Park. So that'll be fun to get started, um, at the county level. And then, um, yeah, so this is my last meeting. So I'd like to thank everybody. Um, I especially shout out to Erin Smith and Brenda and Natalie for all their help with me on the planning commission. I was the liaison to the planning commission meeting for this year. So I'd like to thank them, the city staff, for their hard work. Um, also, uh, Lynn, all her work on the budget and Vicky, all your, how have you been? Got great. Um, and then obviously Brent, uh, you have a great team. The city is in great hands. Um, when I first joined the city council and we had like a city council, uh, in a day, where I went through and, uh, you know, got to meet all the department heads, um, it's just talking to everybody. The city's in great hands. And the other thing that was amazing was how, how few city staff there actually are. You know, when you're kind of in the public and, you know, out there and not, not, you think, oh, there's, there's hundreds of people. No, it's not. So, um, but they do a great job. And then, uh, everybody up here. So Eric, I, I am always amazed at how you'll have a comment and you say it so eloquently and just, you take anything, it's like, wow, that's really deep thinking. Um, you know, just, um, so I, I appreciate that. I very enjoyed working with you. Lori, you always think of something no one else did. So that's great to have another, you know, thought on the planning commission. Like, I never thought of that. So, um, Kristi, how in the heck do you have enough time to do all these two-month days at the city council? Uh, so it's been great, great work with you. And of course, our mayor, um, I think we have the, the best mayor in this, in the whole state. Uh, so, you know, Courtney.
It feels like I paid you to say.
No, no, no. Um, thank, thank you for everything. Um, I know, started out in the planning commission right after you got elected, but almost nine years ago now. Uh, so, and then, um, I'll also say good luck to Kayla. So, uh, I hope you enjoy it as much as I did. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Reid.
Thank you, Reid.
Um, it's hard to follow that up, Reid, but I
So I went last.
For better or for worse, have a long laundry list. Um, let's see, just going through my list. Um, December third, there was a retirement party for Commissioner Degler. He has been on the county board forever. Um, and I've really, really enjoyed getting to know him. He is a really great guy. And especially before COVID, there were days where I would see him more times in, during the week than I saw Zach. Because it would be a library board meeting and a cap agency meeting. And then there would be community leaders or that kind of thing. So it was fun to, to wish him well. Um, we had a Carver County Mayor's meeting on December sixth. Um, Carver Village Christmas was on December seventh, as was the tree lighting. Um, both were such great events. And the Lions do a great job with Carver Village Christmas. Santa comes downtown and a fire department. It is like the best of living in a small town. Um, and then the tree lighting, um, that was Carver on the Minnesota. They had a horse-drawn carriage for the first time, probably since before COVID. Um, and that was really cool to see. It was so popular that they ran out of, uh, schmores ingredients. However, Steve from the Chamber turned out to be the MVP of that event because he had done Chaska's tree lighting the night before and just so happened to have a trunk full of marshmallows. So that was really cool that he was like, and he's such a, like, a helper and such a jubilant guy. He's like, well, they've got marshmallows. Um, Steve, what is Steve's name? Steve Curtis from the Chamber. He's the executive director of the Southwest Chamber. Okay. Um, so really great that he was able to do that. Um, on December eighth, I did mayor's office hours. And I've been trying to kind of bucket my mayor's office hours with other events because I understand that people don't want to come down on a Saturday between nine and eleven when there's nothing else going on. Um, so what I did is I had it at the same time as the Chambers Holiday Market that was downstairs. Um, and it turned out to be really, really fruitful in terms of getting people to come in. At one point, I had two people that I was in talking to and there was a line of four people out the door. So, um, really good. And I just want to share
It's a huge turnout.
Yeah.
I mean, I, you know, because you've asked me before, I was like, well, it was a big turnout. I had four people. It was two hours. This was, I bet I had ten to twelve people stopped. So it was really great. Uh, but I just want to share a story and I think why this is so important in doing this engagement. One of the people that stopped by was a woman who, um, lives in the newer neighborhood. Um, um,
Timber Creek?
No, the one that's kind of a circular, no, northwest, the preserve. I think it's the preserve. Thank you.
Yep.
Um, and they closed down their house, according to Carver County Property Records, in late July. And she was like, listen, my neighbors have a, like I said, eighty-seven-year-old family member. And all he wants to do is take Southwest Prime to get to the lodge at the Chamber, at the community center, so the senior center. And they keep calling, they're having troubles with Uber updating their maps and being able to see their address. And Southwest Transit doesn't have our address on their maps. And I said, like, that shouldn't be happening. That seems like a really easy fix. So even though we're still in the process of, we're updating our maps, getting them to Southwest Transit, that's been taken care of. Southwest Transit's now updating their maps. Like, we've come to a solution. And hopefully, POPS, which is what this gentleman goes by, um, will be able to take Southwest Prime to the lodge a few days a week. Hopefully, hopefully next week, but certainly early next year. So, um, just really low-hanging fruit that I think is probably something that has been on this family's to-do list. But she was like, ah, you're here. I'm going to say this, you know, like, and just making myself available. Because we know that people don't come to these meetings. So just kind of going out there and trying a little bit harder to
There's a game.
Be there. Oh, sports ball. Let's see, what else? Uh, regional council of mayor's meeting was December ninth. Um, last week, on December eleventh, I got to, uh, volunteer at the Carver Senior Citizens Luncheon. And that was another really special event, um, that I have always been curious about, but didn't, but wanted to be really careful about inserting myself. So, um, I talked to Kim Whaley and, um, Mrs. Grimm.
Evelyn.
Evelyn, yes, sorry, thank you. Um, when I was downtown for the Carver Village Christmas and she was like, yeah, absolutely, come down. So, um, get cards from like Culvers and QuickTrip and Fleet Farm and that kind of thing. So, um, just a really nice event. And between, I mean, there were probably three events that the Lions had some involvement in, or a lot of involvement in downstairs last week, between Carver Village Christmas, the Blood Drive, and then the Senior Citizens Luncheon. We're just so lucky to have, between them and Carver on the Minnesota, all of these volunteer organizations in our community that just do this stuff because it's good for the community and brings folks together. So, um, really lucky to have those groups. Um, that is it for my updates, but we all got an email, um, switching topics. We all got an email from Scott Sparland over the weekend, within the last few days, about a water storage initiative. Is that something that you guys are interested in learning more about? Should we? I told him that I would check in with you all here because we can't privately. Um, and is that something? I, I can't necessarily wrap my brain around it. I know that he did email us in twenty twenty-one and there wasn't an appetite to proceed further with it, but, uh, just wanted to check in and see if that was something that there's an appetite or interest to invite him.
Would that be a work council, a work session?
Um, it could be. Sorry, Brent, I'm kind of bringing this on you, but he had reached out to us previously. It could probably be either one.
Like water storage of what, like?
So he is working to get, um, support for this water storage initiative from communities along the Minnesota River. And that's the part of it that I don't understand. How do you store water? Where do you put it? What do you do with it? Why is this important? Um, who is he with again? Like, does he have a? I think it's called the water storage.
Yeah, I read it.
Or something.
Couldn't get a grasp of it.
Could we, could we connect him to Erin Schmidt and kind of vet this before we bring him into a little work session? I just don't know what this is or
Yeah, what, and I think it would be a good work session.
Okay. Um, yes, I will forward the email to Erin Schmidt and I will copy you. I'm sorry for bringing this up, um, out of nowhere. Um, and then we can kind of decide how we want to proceed.
It is because, thinking of, there's not a lot of, all the areas adjacent to the river are owned by U.S. Fish and Wildlife or, or, um, Minnesota Valley. So I don't know if we'd have a lot of controlling interest in facilitating that. So that's why I want to get Erin involved.
It looks like from his email, what, where his level of interest is, is for us to sign a letter, a memorandum, or a, a letter of support. Um, and he has quite a list of communities and counties and other groups, like lower Minnesota Rivers, Rottershaw District has signed on to support this initiative. Uh, but I will, I will follow up with forwarding that email to those groups. Um, alright, that is it for my list. Thank you again.
You're not getting rid of me.
Uh, thank you so much.
No, thank you. I've, I've had a really great time. So, thank you, everyone.
Alright, do you want to close the meeting?
I move to adjourn.
Alright.
I'll second.
Motion to adjourn from council member Welsh and a second from council member Ma. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Good evening.